Six thirty-one and the March tenth, planning commission, and so we will look marks in order. Please take a roll call.
I'm sorry, I was having technical difficulties. Dave, I apologize, I might have hit something I shouldn't have. Can we have a minute to finish working out the technical?
Okay, we'll take a few minute recess.
Won't be long, I apologize. My computer is like present day.
Very good, we're in good order now, so let's continue with our meeting. We start with the roll call, please.
Jeremy Hartzell.
Here.
Lee Brown.
Here.
Al Bundy. Carol Harvey. Kid Kennedy.
Here.
Larry Larson.
Here.
Sean Wilson.
Here.
Sean's attending via Zoom tonight. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have the approval minutes from the January twenty-seventh meeting. Any comments or corrections?
If you approve the minutes as prepared.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No opposed, very good. Next is the public hearings. Our item for tonight is CUP two zero two one dash zero three, Tammerack Contractor Services, request by Skip House and Tammerack Land Company for a conditional use permit. Staff, Karen, you have a presentation for us?
I do. As announced, this is a request from Skip House and the Tammerack Land Company for conditional use permit pursuant to municipal code section eighteen point zero nine point zero nine zero point G point one. Contractors and construction services use four point two two acre parcel. On a portion of the west half of the southwest quarter of section twelve, township twelve south, range sixty-nine west of the six principal meridian. Line southwest to Tammerack Tech Park Valley number two and line northwest to Tammerack Tech Park Valley number one with an address of ten ten Research Drive. So this project has a somewhat lengthy history that this property was first developed or the building on the site was first constructed in nineteen ninety-three. And then it was in nineteen eighty-seven when the property was annexed into city limits. First state law, the zoning process should occur within ninety days of the annexation, but that did not happen at that time. And it was in two thousand and four when it was discovered that the property had not been formally zoned. So there was an application in that July to get this area zoned and that area made up or consisted of the current business center in Hendrick Research Drive as well as the subject property. The zoning that was proposed and ultimately adopted the service commercial. And the staff report at that time noted that this property was developed already with the contractor storage and services in place. And it was planned to be subdivided into three lots at some point in the future. In this particular shot here on the screen of the PowerPoint, I've got the site highlighted in this teal. And Research Drive is this property, this road here that comes around to the south and ultimately connects out with Highway sixty-seven. You've got the O'Keefe Surroundings here in this location. Part of the business center here, the school bus barn here immediately to the east of the property. Part of the Stone Ridge Vine is off to the south. There is another parcel outside city limits here. And then off to the northwest is another subdivision. Drawing a line with it. It's got master's sharp in it. I apologize. I'm still learning my my community here. So the area has largely been developed with a variety of uses. There is still some vacant ground in and around the area. Here between, actually west of O'Keefe Surroundings, there's areas slated for future development.
Is a Stone Ridge development going to connect into there and where does it, where does it connect? Or will it connect? Right there. That's just checking. That is the, that's proposed connection.
Yes.
It actually exists.
There's a road.
It's already there.
Sidewalk.
Yeah, it's Stone Drive. So. To advance the slide, Dave, I just said enter, correct? None of that is working. There it goes. Yeah, I don't know why it's being really finicky to me. So when we look at the zoning map for what's going on in this area, there is actually a variety of zone districts in place. The subject property is zone the service commercial, as is the one commercial property here, right adjacent to Highway sixty-seven. Those white blocks indicate lots that are outside city limits in Inteller County.
The bus parking.
What?
That was interesting, the school bus parking is in one little island of that city property.
Yeah, there's two islands in there.
There's one base city property tax.
O'Keefe Surroundings and the vacant parcel next to it are zoned heavy service commercial like industrial. The Stone Ridge Development here is PUD. And then there is other property out further to the west that is zoned suburban residential. To the northeast is a public or semi-public zoning, which is for the east. That's a variety of uses in around the area. We look back at the property and what was going on previously in two thousand and four, back when it was founded zoning investigation. These are some pictures from that era that show the condition of the property at that time. And while the building was there, the the, there was very minimal outdoor service on the, outdoor storage on the property at that time. And so the purpose of tonight really is to codify that existing use, since it did not get its permits at the time of annexation or back when the zoning district was established. And more recently, the applicant has requested a second driveway. So that's part of what brought us to our attention here again in terms of we need to bring this into compliance. So when we look at the, the site itself, there's the Research Drive here, one's a child school, but this diagonal section here in the screen. This is the existing building in the property that has been there since nineteen ninety-three. And then there's other equipment that you see on site that comes and goes. The existing driveway entrance is over here to the west, where you see the drive and Research Drive. And then onsite, there is a variety of other outdoor things that are being stored there, such as the, the concrete rubble. And then you've got Moy Gulch here off to the northeast of the property. You can see here in this bottom right corner of the area, that's where the bus barn property is. And there is a request for a second driveway that would come in about here on the site in this lower right-hand corner of the property.
Karen, the application calls for two new access points. Was that addressed in your stack report?
We've only talked to the applicant about one new access point, and that's what brought us to our attention. You'll see throughout the application where there is discussion about that potential future subdivision for three parcels. And so within that, you will see a third site for, for a potential third driveway at that time. But at this point in time, to my knowledge, we've only been talking about two access points, the one that's existing and then a new one there in that southeast corner of this property.
Okay.
So the next series of slides is, show the existing conditions they were taking here probably about a month ago. Oh, they did want to note there are two businesses operating on this property, my apologies, Scott Homes Limited and Ram Excavating. So this next series of slides, like I said, show the existing conditions. So from that southeast corner, the top, if you could see the bus property off to the right. And there is a nice stand of existing trees. And as you go further down Research Drive and around that corner, you can see where those trees are still fairly dense. But often the distance through them, you can see some of the things stored on that site. The next picture was taken further down Research Drive or through those trees off to the right, you can see the existing building. And as you get further down the road, the bottom right photo shows the existing driveway into that property as well as some of the equipment that's on site. You stand in front of the existing driveway and looking to the property, you can see the existing building and some of the other items that are being stored outside past that gate. And then when we travel past that driveway to the northwest corner of the property and look back down Research Drive, the driveway entrance into the property is about here from the power hole. So these next couple of photos were taken in and around on the property. So as we enter the property, yeah, this is standing inside the property, looking back out at Research Drive. And then in on the property, you can see some of the, the concrete rubble that has accumulated there as well as some other soil that's being retained on site. Next, we've got Moy Gulch, which is on the south of the dirt pile. We've got more of that soil that's being retained. And then in the yard, you can look back up in there and see some of the other equipment that's being stored on site right now. Next, around the building, you've got other items that have accumulated. You're able to see from the, the yard near the shop looking out to the southeast and then continuing to look to the southeast towards the bus barn property. And then from the yard, northeast at the police department across the gulch, there's other equipment. This is a good picture here in the middle that shows that stand of trees that does provide some natural battery. But through those, you can see the Research Drive. Off there in the distance. And then this is the west shop wall. So again, this is the, the site that we're going to be talking about. Hopefully all that makes some, some sense as we go forward with the presentation. So in preparing this application, planning staff had asked Mr. House to prepare a concept plan for what he was thinking about further development of the site. And so since he does tend to think of this property in terms of those three future parcels, we have three different site plans that were proposed or submitted that kind of break us out into those potential three future lots. So this first one is the existing building. And so here we have Research Drive, the entrance into the property. And the yellow area is what he is proposing for changing the surface to some millings, providing some other equipment area, other material storage, and then he's highlighted the existing trees in that area. This second site point is the potential future lot two. So within it, it also shows a variety of surface areas for storage, different types of outdoor storage. He's got an area flagged as a possibility for a detention pond. And at this time, when he initially submitted these, he had contemplated three different screened areas. But he and I have since talked about possibly just doing one fence line along the existing Research Drive area, which would give him more flexibility on site. So there is a little bit of a disconnect between what was submitted here in the concept versus a recent conversation. And then the third lot was not presented in quite as much detail. So it's a little bit different scale. So off here to the lower right-hand corner or lower central part of the site, the gray areas that we were on site, and then he's got a couple of smaller areas flagged for, for storage. And with this, you can see where that driveway that was, we've come in on Research Drive. So this last picture of the, the site plan pulls all three of those lots together. So in this left side of the screen, you've got the existing building and existing access, the center area, we keep that second lot. And then on here in the slower part of the screen, we keep potential that third lot. I said that's all speculation about a potential future subdivision that is not a part of this application. So at a staff level, we were looking at this as the current lot is configured as one large parcel. So I appreciate Mr. House's desire to have an eye towards the future. But at this point, we can only deal with what is, with that eye to the future, but not completely set everything up based on something that hasn't come through the door in form of an application. So next, we will go into the conditional use permit criteria. The municipal code section eighteen point five seven regulates the review of conditional use permit requests. And within it, it talks about the standards for conditional use permits are intended only as a minimum necessary for review. An application for a conditional use permit, even though meeting the minimal standards of this chapter may be denied if it is determined that the development is not in the best interest of the city. And then we have specific standards by which all conditional uses must comply in order to receive approval. It's proposed use was analyzed with Service Commercial Zone District for all of the conditional use pieces in eighteen point oh nine point oh nine oh G Contractors and Construction Services. And I want to remind you again that this is an existing use, so our objective here is to bring this into compliance. So it's a little awkward compared to when you've got a, a new proposal that's not on the site. So it's a little challenging providing this up, but with here, we look at these criteria. The first is related to need and mitigation. So the proposed development in use shall have demonstrated the drug need to be located at the location proposed and provide adequate mitigation measures to lessen all identified impacts. So this site was already developed prior to annexation in ninety-seven. Since that time, it's been used exclusively as a commercial property for contractors and construction services. So that's a period of over twenty-five years. This use of this location also predates the residential uses in the surrounding area. And so staff had concluded that there was no unmitigated potential impacts that were identified for continuation of this use at this current level. The next relates to public health and welfare. That the proposed development in use shall not endanger the public health and welfare. This use has not created those types of issues or concerns. It is at a low intensity that parts of it are within the existing building. And I left out a phrase in my staff report, and otherwise the outdoor storage area can be buffered or screened from surrounding residential and commercial uses. There is the existing natural buffers provided by Moy Gulch, as well as the stand-up plant trees along Research Drive. The next criteria relates to property value. And the criteria is the proposed development in use shall not substantially injure the value of vicinity properties. This existing use has been in place at this location for over twenty-five years. During that time, there is development of both commercial and residential uses in the surrounding area. The applicant had presented that the subsequent neighboring uses would not have developed in this area if they would not have been supported by the state market. So finding that that's not an issue. With regard to harmony, the proposed development in use shall be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located. There's no known conflicts with the neighboring properties that are related to this current use. And that mixture of uses that's been developed in the area that includes the school district's bus barn, single-family residences, as well as the Tammerack Business Center. So all those appear to work in coordination of one another at this area. So the next one, next criteria relates to city plans and that the development in use should conform with the provisions and objectives and policies of all city plans adopted in effect at the time of the application, including but not limited to growth management, transportation utilities, capital improvements, and downtown development. This, at a staff level and reviewing the comprehensive plan, our new one that was adopted, found that there was policies in such there to support this. Specifically, land use in growth goal one, to provide opportunities for growth and development while preserving community and environmental quality. Economic development objective one point two, to maintain area businesses in assist with expansion or adding complementary businesses to create clusters of critical mass. And then sustainable environmental objective one point one, recommend that development minimizes its impact on the natural environment and creates a quality human environment through sustainable design practices. On this slide, I have two future land use maps. So there's an important item I want to note here that in the, well, I first want to say that the, that per, actually, no, I will do this, we're sorry. That from twenty-ten, the future land use map at that time had identified this property, this hot pink area here as mixed use. And then when we get to the twenty-thirty plan, the proposed future use for that area is a single-family residential. So when you look at this in twenty-thirty, and you look at what's going on in the, the area from a standpoint of uses in and around there, you still see that variety and mixture. But given all of the other single-family development in and around here off to the southwest, I could see why they would potentially map that as a single-family residential. There's also the possibility that it's just a mapping error. And then I want to remind everyone that while this provides guidance, that's exactly all it is, is guidance. At the start of the section in the new plan that talks about future land use, it says that the future land use map provides guidance for rezoning requests, annexation proposals, new development and redevelopment projects within city limits. Its purpose is to honor the city's existing zoning map while providing both direction and flexibility for sustainable balance of uses in future development or redevelopment proposals. So if somebody was coming in and wanting to, at this time, propose changing the zone into single-family for development, this map would provide guidance that would say it would definitely support that. In this situation, since we're dealing with an existing use within the service commercial zone district, and that, that contractor services is potentially allowed by a conditional use permit, I would say that's really what's governing what we're looking at more than anything else. So that's staff's recommendation is to, to just honor bringing this existing use into a greater degree of compliance. And remember that this future land use map will be is more guidance for other types of development changes.
I'll just comment on that, Karen. From the information gave us a logical sense, it's logical what you just described. I, I would just ask the planning commission, probably look at that and say, there was probably an error in the drafting, as, as Karen suggested. This definitely was zone service commercial at that time, I think are just our consultants overlooked that and we did too.
I wouldn't necessarily, without knowing that it's an error, I wouldn't assume it's an error, but I think Karen made the point, they're not requesting a reason, we're requesting to formalize the existing use. Suggested one would want to rezone this place, this area. One might well want to look at this as guidance and think that maybe residential would be something to consider, but that's not really on the table before us.
You know, I'd also say that the zoning on the property does take precedent, it is, is, you have to be very careful that when we review projects, that it does conform with the company's plan. I mean, it's really, there is guidance and our, our decisions. But the map, the goals, objectives, so on and so forth, were put together to kind of, this is the way the community desires to grow. But in this case, I think it's very clear that there may have been an error made in the mapping, but I think the old variety of this existing use on the property and the existing zone.
I think we're all agreeing, this is, this is, if there was a problem, this isn't it.
Just in case anybody else had questioned that or done in-depth homework, I wanted to make sure that that was all out on the table as, as clearly as I could.
Thank you.
So the next criteria relates to city regulations. We're looking in terms of the proposed development in use shall conform to the provision, standards, requirements of all city regulations adopted in effect at the time of the application, including but not limited to zoning subdivision utilities, buildings, and construction business regulations and engineering specifications. So this existing use is being brought into compliance with the provisions and standards in place here at the city at this point in time. That does include engineering specifications and that a review by our city engineer has noted that the City Hall and Park drainage criteria manual does have requirements related to onsite detention and water quality control facilities being installed to mitigate the existing runoff. So also when we look at utilities in the area, water, sewer, electric, gas, they're all currently available. water, sewer, electric, gas, they're all currently available in Research Drive. The existing building is not currently served with water or wastewater. And like I said before, potential future lot configurations or future subdivision have been included, but not a part of this application. And city tap fees would be required when permits proposed to be added to the existing building or in conjunction with other permits that then would require utilities. The next item is traffic.
One question at this time?
Except for me.
Okay. This is the provision dealing with the requirements and regulations of the city. One of the requirements of the city with the condition of use is that a site plan be prepared in conjunction with that application, two applications actually, the additional use and the site plan. You must have felt comfortable in what you said. And you're okay with the concept of this plan at this time until future uses are known.
This is part of the transition within the planning office between Sally's retirement and my serving. So my understanding is the prior director was comfortable with a concept plan at this stage.
Okay.
Under the conditions of approval. I would be more comfortable with a more cohesive site plan. And it's not, it's not hugely in depth, but especially since we have talked about changing the fencing, I would just like the site plan to depict where the fence is going, the driveway location, and then any onsite storm, stormwater facilities that would need to be put together as a part of this. So that cohesively pulls everything together for us.
Okay. Two, you're touching on the area that was a concern to me, at least initially reviewing material, is you seem to have, you seem to have three site plans that aren't very detailed. They don't really get one that puts everything in one place. It seemed to me that that would be something that you would call for.
So that was a concept to get the conversation started and get this in front of the planning commission, the city council. The applicant certainly could have gone above and beyond that and sort of pulled that together, but was also comfortable with this particular approach.
It's three separate sites. It makes it hard to review. And it also suggests that there's some approval of separate box, which there isn't because there's no subdivision involved here.
So I agree, it's not optimal, but it's what came in. And that's what I needed to bring in front of you.
Just to comment, so this site is already developed to a certain state that it's been operating in for a long time. And so they're trying to get the zoning coming out, as I understand it correct?
Correct.
So normally you would have a new site plan for a new zoning area that you would review. But in this case, we can review the existing conditions as the current site plan. And this is a future site plan being submitted as a proposal for something potentially going to happen. And then we'll have to come back for subdivision and what have you. Kind of make it any different, I don't know.
Not sure if I want to.
Well, I mean, he's saying we have to have a site plan, but the site's already developed with this current use, so.
But then the site may alter or be changed in development with the subdivision.
Exactly.
And at the time of the subdivision, we require a preliminary plan.
Absolutely.
And that preliminary plan is very similar to a site plan. It's all the same information. So we can reconcile that a little bit by saying, if and when there's a subdivision, we could require that, goes through that process.
Right.
And we can ensure that that detailed information that is included with the preliminary plan can be brought forward to a site plan. It doesn't have to be done now.
The next, the next trigger is the permit for the second driveway. So with that, that's our opportunity to make sure that we have a more comprehensive site plan that addresses where the, any type of fencing or screening goes, onsite stormwater detention, and then the driveway itself. So I think that's what's potentially going to pull that together. It's just not here in front of you all to see this.
Take care. Why don't you continue the presentation? You have some items left.
I have one more question on this item. Sorry.
Real quickly, Mr. Hartsfield, your microphone's on.
Thank you, Karen.
This is, this is a section where we deal with standards of various city regulations, including utilities. And do we know, did the city utility director provide you with information if there has been any water tap allocation designated for this particular property?
As part of the referral process, I did not receive feedback, but I did go and check with the department here earlier today. And there is a water tap allocated within our system, but the tap itself has not been purchased.
Okay. Now would be one tap. This was being allocated.
For the one existing business.
Got you. Okay.
So other allocations or changes to that would potentially happen at subdivision.
Okay. At the time, subdivision, there's two last, same, same group, will be increasing the water usage.
Or added into the allocation.
Yes. Yes. Okay. I'm sorry.
So the next item relates to traffic. That the proposed development in use shall be designed, constructed, and maintained to accommodate the onsite and offsite traffic generated. In this particular situation, while they are requesting a second driveway, they are not anticipating any type of change whatsoever with regard to their traffic volumes. The purpose of the second driveway is to make it easier to get larger equipment in and out of that site. And that's really the driving factor behind this. Their ability to pull in comfortably and get the equipment off the road as they would, you know, come through any type of fence. That was, they're not actually stacked up on the ground also as a degree of safety. The next criteria relates to the environment. The proposed development in use shall be designed, constructed, and maintained with appropriate regards to pography, surface drainage, soil potentials, natural and man-made hazards, streams, and environments with significant features. You know, as we said before, this building was cited here in 1993. It's in a fairly flat portion of the site, so that seems to work with the existing topography. The rest of the site is also fairly level and sits lower than Research Drive. Off to the north, northeast is Lloyd Gulch, and it's associated flood plain. That with the future, potential future subdivision of the property, Lloyd Gulch may be platted as a separate tract. However, the city will not take ownership of the floodway unless the private owner at that time improved Lloyd Gulch, you know, by armoring its banks, erosion mitigation, those types of things, to a level that is acceptable to the city. With regard to air quality, the applicant is proposing to use rotor millings to stabilize the site's storage area surface. This will reduce dust and also help retain runoff water quality. There has been a preliminary drainage study that was submitted in review by our state here. They provided comments about, just seeking some clarification on a couple of things. One of the primary concerns was the narrative states that the drainage study calculates future runoff at 75% of the total site becoming impervious. But the drainage study itself details the detention pond being calculated, assuming an ultimate impervious area of only 70% for the overall site. So we're seeking for clarification for which one of these, since there is that disconnect in the information that's been provided.
Does this, does this connect to the recommendation, the ultimate provided that there be a requirement of 15% non-impervious surface?
That's a little bit different.
It's a different source of, the ordinance is different, different position. But does there need to be any reconciliation of the amount of impervious surface in drainage studies, whether 70 or 75%, suggestion that there be 85% in effect by reciting the previous surface ordinance?
My understanding is our requirements require us to look at 70% of the site. So the applicant had proposed a slightly different number of 75%. And so our engineer is actually just asking for those to be reconciled. So that's the factor that gets looked at with the drainage study. With regard to the site as a whole, under our land use criteria, we want to make sure that at least 15% of that site retains its open space.
I have another question that we'll get to.
So they're slightly different things, but they do kind of draw the tail together in terms of what the overall site ultimately looks like.
When we're putting recognition overall, let's look at those. I'll see if there's the initial presentation you were able to follow with.
We're getting close.
Okay, very good. Let's move forward.
Okay, so the next item is utilities, but the proposed development in use shall be designed with adequate water supply, wastewater disposal, solid waste disposal, air quality protection methods, and surface water drainage. You know, this is similar to that other criteria. Right now, there's no, the building, the existing building is not currently served with water and wastewater. There's no changes or additions to that existing building proposed at this time. Future changes that require water and wastewater will be subject to the regulations and tap fees in place at that time. As part of this application, surface water drainage, air quality protection methods, and solid waste are being addressed. That use of rotor millings, the storage area should help reduce dust potential and support air quality. Change in the surface material to the site increases the need to install onsite detention of water quality control facilities to mitigate existing runoff. And then within that site should locate trash containers or roll-offs for any type of solid waste removal. That needs to be identified in the site plan. The next criteria deals with public danger. And that reads that the proposed development in use shall be designed, constructed, and maintained to not unduly increase the public danger of fire, explosion, and other safety hazards upon the public and persons residing or working on the site and vicinity. The continuation of this existing use will not create any significant safety hazards to the public or persons working on the site. And then the only comment we received from northeast Tyler County Fire Protection District was no issues from the fire department at this time to add the driveway or another storage lot. Driveway access should be a minimum of 20 foot in width. Then our final criteria deals with aesthetics. That the development in use may be required to provide architectural design schemes. It may also require amenities such as, but not limited to, fencing, landscaping, buffer areas, and other aesthetic enhancement measures as required ultimately by the city council. At this time, there's no changes or additions proposed for the existing building. Future additions or changes to that building will be evaluated for compliance with city design guidelines at that time. Retention of those existing trees and then screening proposed by the applicant will enhance the site in the neighborhood. And then those conditional use permit conditions require immediate improvements to the site that serve to clean up and further enhance the area. So as a part of this whole process, we did our due diligence with public notice to property owners within 150 feet. This actually was noticed on two different occasions. The first one, when we originally had a hearing date back in January. And so it was at our request at the staff level that this gets delayed to a later date. We took care of that second notification and posted the property. And through our referrals to other agencies, the only two that we received written comments back from were our city engineer and then the fire district. And those have all been included in this report. So with that, staff recommendation is that the planning commission recommend the city council approval of this conditional use permit based on the findings contained in the staff report and presented to the city for this property with the following conditions. And I recognize that this is a little bit of a change that I put in specific dates instead of, you know, 30 days after approval. Whereas I guess we've typically done, that was largely so that we didn't have to do the math and took care of some ambiguity that sometimes happens around, but do you just this really affect reply? So the first condition, prior to November 1st, 2022, the property owner shall conduct the following minor site modifications. To clean all litter and debris from the site, specifically the old truck and concrete. Or the conditional use permit will be revoked until this is resolved. Construct solid, opaque, or semi-transparent fencing or other suitable buffering for the outside storage area in a material compatible with the natural surroundings. Two, the final drainage report shall be approved by the city engineer by May 27th, 2022. Three, prior to November 1st, 2022, onsite detention and water quality control facility shall be installed to mitigate existing runoff per the City of Woodland Park drainage criteria manual or the conditional use permit will be revoked until stormwater improvements will be completed and inspected. Four, all applicable fees are to be paid. For example, stormwater fees based upon impervious area and transportation capital fees at the time of the driveway. Item five talks about the final concept plan or final site plan. Shall be submitted and show that material storage areas for each future water zone, equipment parking areas for rolling stock, screening, fencing details, the area that accounts for 25% of the landscaping, 20%, or sorry, 10%, sewage storage area, potential indoor storage and maintenance barns of any of those future kind of buildings. And then lighting cut sheets or descriptions for external lighting. Six, hours of operation shall be limited to dawn, noon, early 7:00 PM to dusk, and later than 9:00 PM, Monday through Friday. Seven, all exterior lighting and painting shall be downcast and shielded with a temperature of 3,000 Kelvin or warmer and shall not exceed the 25-foot in height. Eight, uses shall not include any activity involving use or storage of flammable or explosive material unless protected by adequate firefighting and fire suppression equipment, safety devices, as are normally used in handling any such material. Nine, no smoke, odor, vibration, glare, or particulate emissions shall be permitted which can cause damage to health, animals, vegetation, or affected properties beyond the parcel boundaries. 10, notwithstanding any notwithstanding any conditions herein, this conditional use permit does not grant a noise relief permit. And the use in business shall at all times be subject to municipal code section 9.4.1, noise. 11, pursuant to municipal code 18.3.1.80, at least 50% of the personal standing room is open space. 12, pursuant to municipal code section 18.3.1.80. D, healthy existing significant trees shall be preserved to the extent of reasonably feasible and may be used to satisfy landscaping and open space requirements. And 13, prior to the sale of property or issuance of a building permit, the property owner shall submit for and receive the appropriate approvals. Example A, a final plat is the name for this unbedded land. B, a final site plan for permitted use in landscaping, drainage, architectural elevation, access, et cetera. C, infrastructure zoning development permit pursuant to municipal code 18.3.1.70 for the installation of curving veteran sidewalk along Research Drive or submit fees and move. And D, zoning development permits and building permits for all destruction. Finally, item 14, Lloyd Gulch may be platted as a separate tract. However, the city will not take ownership of the floodway unless the private owner improves Lloyd Gulch and couldn't armory and erosion, etc., to a level acceptable to the city.
Thank you. Thank you. Or have any questions on what's been presented so far?
I have a question on one of your recommendations, conditions of approval, number five, Karen. Are you talking, are you talking about modifications of the three plans that were submitted to include this information?
Yes. And just to add some clarification, in hindsight, condition thirteen probably should have been split apart because part of that really relates more to site plan, if there's subsequent development of the existing parcel, and some of those conditions are typically triggered at the time of the subdivision. So they got a little intertwined there.
Any else? Questions for her? Take it to, to the applicant has any comments to add to the discussion. Charles?
Skip House, Scott Holmes, Woodland Park. Representing Tamrac Land Company. I also have a stockholder interest in Tamrac Land Company. Couple of thoughts right off the bat. Yes, there were some things that fell through the crack a few years back with regards to in the zoning application, conditional use permit was asked for in the zoning application, went through his process and actually stuff, stuff went out to staff or comment, but nothing ever happened. So we've had a couple of instances where things have fallen through the crack in the past. What's most important right now is Karen made the comment that we're not looking at subdivision. The prior planning director asked us to give the city a concept of what we might want to do with property. So if those things are not being considered today, then all your requests for an updated site plan for the three lots and all that stuff is irrelevant. Because we're not doing this at this point. As Mr. Kennedy said, we're looking at the site as it exists right now. What predicated our request to come in for the conditional use permit was a request for the driveway. And our comment is the driveway needs to be part of the approval of the conditional use permit. If we don't get the driveway, why do we need a conditional use permit? There's no reason for it. We're existing, we can come and go through our, our driveway as we exist right now. The interesting thing about the zoning, when you look at what happened, the area north of Lloyd Gulch, where the police operations center is right now, was originally some heavy service commercial light industrial. When the city decided with the police department in there, they resoned it to a public entity. So we get the privilege of having the police department in our backyard looking over top of us for maybe a health and safety reason. And right now, when we look at properties that will allow contractor storage by zoning, there are two lots in the city limits that we're aware of. They're both in the Tamrac Ted Park. One is owned by Kevin Lloyd and one is owned by Tamrac Land Company. Anywhere else in town, a contractor can't store their equipment or do anything else. So the reason why we did our three sites was to give the city a concept, a sketch plan, if you will, of what might come down the road. So if we're not looking at those three sites right now, and the requirements addressing those sites in the future would come at the time of subdivision. Now, one of the issues we need to look at and help you understand is that back in twenty fifteen. A letter of map revision was performed for this area. And if you look at a particular page in our submittal. This is the map that shows the area that FEMA redesigned Lloyd Gulch's flow rates for. This site was included in that, along with the bus barn, the police operations center, the Tamrac, part of the Tamrac Business Center, and a whole bunch of stuff downfield, down the road, including the townhouses and going into the golf course. At that point in time, all the runoff from the site as it existed in twenty fifteen was taken into account in the capacity, if you will, of Lloyd Gulch. No onsite detention recommended by FEMA. No future development or current development would require detention. Future development of the property or planning would require an update of the drainage report based on the use at that point in time and the review by the city for onsite detention. And we might have some issues right now with, with erosion or something like that, and we're happy to sit down with Ben being back and review those things with it. So from that standpoint, a hundred percent of what's coming off the site right now is taken into account by FEMA, federal emergency management agents. The site does show three driveways potentially. Only because we were asked to show. If you would not ask, if staff had not asked to show it, we would have just submitted a site plan with what we got and one driver, and that would have been it. The idea of fencing along Research Drive, I think that's a great idea. If that's okay with you. What we were trying to get from the city staff and from you as the planning commission, ultimately from council, is what can we do with the site? We're doing what we're doing now. We've been doing it for twenty years. If you don't like what we're doing, we'll just keep doing it. And, and go on down the road. We won't subdivide, we won't do anything else, we'll live with our single driveway and, and we'll be fat, dumb, and happy and not bother anybody for twenty-some years. And Mr. Brown, I think the answer to your question, if you asked, if you take fifteen percent for open space, what's left? Eighty-five percent. And based on city code, eighty-five percent of the site could be developed. I mean, that's logic. I think the drainage, whether it's seventy or seventy-five percent, that gives us a guidance of what our engineer would do with regards to submitting the plan. And I'm sure you've all looked at the drainage report in the file that we gave you in our submittal, and it hasn't proposed detention bond in there. And our plan would be if we come in with a significant change to the site or a planning process, we'll have to detain at that point in time. So. The driveway request, as we said, triggered this. And so, hey, if you want your driveway, we got to try to comply with the conditional use permit. So that's where we are right now. So from our perspective, the driveway needs to be part of your motion for approval as submitted. Or we may not go down the road, who knows? There are some language issues that Karen and I have talked about with regards to her recommendations. She can call them conditions or whatever you want. But our goal would be to have you approve our submittal as presented or as submitted with amendments, conditions, whatever requirements, whatever you want to call, based on staff's recommendations and your concurrence. I think there are things that we can agree to, and there are things that we might not be able to agree to. But that's a city council decision along those lines based on your recommendation.
Excuse me, sir. Yeah, so do you mean? If other people agree, could it be, would it be helpful if you indicated what position you have on the various conditions that are listed?
Getting there. Okay, great. Going to answer your question. All right. We have no problem with, you know, prior to November one, twenty twenty-two, the property will conduct the following minor site plan. We'll clean up the litter and debris on the site. I've been trying to find a guy to move that old dump truck for about a year. I did get rid of a couple of other pieces of equipment, Mars got rid of some stuff as well. The rubble, as it's called, or the concrete is there. Our plan is to actually trench within our property, a linear ditch, put that concrete in it as a backup wall for any potential erosion on the Lloyd Gulch drainage, the floodplain area. I might have prior conversations with Sally and Sally suggested, hey, they did this down by the golf course, maybe we could find some willows and we can plant those willows between our bank and the floodplain, and willows will grow in the floodplain. If we do it on our property, I don't need the permission of the city or FEMA. But Sally had indicated that I guess when they did the, the golf course stuff years ago, that they were able to get with FEMA, FEMA granted permission to do that kind of thing. Because it stabilizes the dirt, willows grow very well. And if you looked at the drawing or the pictures that were shown earlier, there's a ton of willows on the south, northwest end, and we've got access to willows from other locations that might work out for something. So that, that's one thing we're considering, subject to working that out with the city. And it says, or the CUP will be revoked until this is resolved. I asked the question of what's the procedure if the conditional use permit is revoked? I haven't got an answer. Is it revoked or is it suspended? You can suspend a kid from school and he can come back. You can expel them or revoke them from school and they can't come back. So I'm trying to get a clarification particularly of that. That, or is it deemed that we're not in compliance with our conditional use permit and we have to come back through some process? Don't know the answer to that. So there's a language cleanup, in my opinion, needs to be done for that. Item B was construct a solid opaque or semi-transparent fencing. We submitted in our thing to you, three choices that we thought were acceptable, trees and two types of screenings. I assume you've all looked at that in the report. Those are the three things we would be looking at doing. So we would want you, that's why I said, as we submitted, so any of those three would be viable fencing alternatives or screenings for what we need to do along Research Drive. Not having to come back and say, hey, we wanted to do this, is this okay today? We want to know today that that's okay. Final drainage report. I don't know what the final drainage report is. The final drainage report would typically be a drainage report submitted with a final plat. Now, if they're asking for us to update or make some corrections to the existing drainage report, no problem. Now, when we were supposed to be to you in January twenty-ninth, we're now here in March. What about you, Bill? My engineer took two months to get us our preliminary drainage report that we have right now with somewhere between seventy and seventy-five percent of the site potentially being impervious. So I don't know whether he can get it by that particular date. But he thought he might be able to get it and make it work, but we'll give it the old college try as long as if we have an issue and give staff enough time that, hey, JPS can't get it done, they need till the third of, of June or something, I don't know. So I don't know whether we're talking a final drainage report for a subdivided property, which we're not talking about tonight, or for the site as revoked. So we need clarification on that. Prior to November first, twenty twenty-two, onsite detention and water quality control facilities, well, onsite detention will come into play when we plat or submit a zoning development permit to do something different to the site than what we're doing now. So if I'm not changing anything, I don't need the detention. And as I said, we might need some erosion control, best BMPs, mismanagement practices, or that kind of stuff. We're happy to do that. Soon as the weather gets good, we can get out there and do stuff. We'll be doing those types of things, coordinating with them, and as we go through, clean up the site, do other stuff. So I, I think we can tie in our water quality issues to the cleaning up the site, getting those things done by November day. Applicable fees are paid, stormwater fees, impervious areas, transportation capital fees, time of the new driveway. Those are things that are typically paid at the time of ZDP. I'm not submitting this zoning development permit. We paid our fee for the driveway. City needs to approve the driveway or deny the driveway. We're not going to make the driveway conditional on something down the road. You either, staff is either going to say yes or no, and we'll go forward with that. Happy to pay the fees when I want to pull a tap to run water or sewer into our building. Happy to pay the fees when the zoning development permit comes through that requires those things at that point in time. Item five says final concept plans. We just said at the very beginning, we're not dealing with these concept plans for today. That's future because staff wired us to submit it because they wanted to get an idea of what we're doing. So I would say basically, number five, done the plot. Based on staff's introduction as we got here. Hours of operation, those are okay. You know, we got no current lighting and any of that kind of stuff, but hours of operation, those are the normal hours of operation. We do have some, sometimes we plow snow and we have to get out. Right now, land excavating is the backup emergency contractor for the city Woodland Park Utility Department. Should they have a water line leak? Do you think it'd be appropriate? If they can't go fix a water line until after seven o'clock in the morning where they can start their stuff? I think there needs to be some language in here with regards to emergency services, snowplowing or something like that, to clarify it so that it gives staff, if you will, cover. If somebody calls and says, hey, at six fifty-five in the morning, they started their tractor because they were going out to fix the water. Normally, they don't. It's, it's not, not an issue. Item number seven, exterior lighting, yeah, that's fine. That, you know, that's one of those things that's going to come up in the, at the time, the building permit or, or something like that. We don't, number eight, we don't store any large quantities of flammable material. I think I've got a five gallon can of, of gas on site for running the generator or something like that. So I'm pretty sure this is really looking at significant storage of flammable products. We're not planning on, in, in item nine, we're not planning on generating smoke other than starting a diesel engine. We're not going to be burning anything, and if we did, we would get a permit that we'd go through that process. We don't think there's an issue with regards to noise relief. We haven't had any problems with noise over the last twenty-some years, so I don't think we'll be there. I think we're okay with fifteen percent of the four acres we have being open space. You know, that can be trees or whatever at that point. I think the healthy existing trees can be part of that fifteen percent or could be a buffer. One of the things that might work is, you know, we did a, a fening trees along sixty-seven because a lot of these were planted by the CCC back in there, so it might be a natural process of bringing in a healthy forest thing with the Forest Service to clean out and clear up. But we got a twenty-five foot building setback along Research Drive, so we won't have any buildings any closer than twenty-five feet to the road right away. Item number thirteen says, prior to the sale of the property or issuance of a building permit, the property owner shall submit and receive approval of blah, blah, blah. I don't think it's the city's intent to permit or to prohibit me or Tamrac Land Company from selling the whole property to him. I think the intent was, as Karen and we talked, was selling individual lots. Well, that's a subdivision ordinance, and that's already on the books. So I think this would read, prior to the issuance of a building permit for a new building, the property owner shall submit for and receive approval of a final plat for the unplatted land. Yeah, we're going to sell it, we're going to plat it, but that's not what we're here about. That's already in ordinance. We don't need to repeat ordinances. Final site plan, that's going to come in, get either final plat or at the submittal of the ZDP. Infrastructure zoning development permit, yep, installation of curb and gutter and sidewalks along Research Drive. I don't know where this came from. This just popped up the other day. Hadn't had any conversations with the prior planning director. But if you look at Research Drive, we, Stone Ridge filing four was platted. There is no curb and gutter along Research. There is existing borrowed ditches on both sides of the road. And it handles all the water going to the north into Lloyd Gulch. So I don't know why. And I guess this could be a cool sidewalk to nowhere, but I don't see that requirement being applicable here because it's not in the city's master plan. Zoning development permits and building permits for all new construction. Karen and I talked about. I think that we want to reference here is any new buildings or additions. We have a water surge. I wanted to come in and put a bathroom in the building we have. I need a building permit. You got to pay tap fees. I, I got to have them inspected. Our plan shows that we want to put a motor operator on the gate we have right now on Research to run the electric line out there. I need a permit. As we discussed, I don't think the intent is to have those types of issues required plating. As we discussed, I don't think the intent is to have those types of issues required plating or zoning development. It would be the addition of, onto the building we have or a brand new structure. So I think some things need to be clarified. We don't care about Lloyd Gulch whether you want it or not. If you don't want it, we're okay with that. You can take that off the table. We just asked, does the city have any interest? Evidently staff says they don't. If council does, they'll make a decision. We don't care. We just said, do you have an interest in it? And if you do, let us, and staff has let us know that they want us to approve it. We're on one side of Lloyd Gulch and the Police Operations Center is on the other side. So I'm assuming if we were looking at improvements, we would be working with the city Woodland Park handling the north side of the drainage area. And we would be handling the south side of the drainage area. So my, my comment would be that I think you need to get some answers and some direction, maybe some clarification. You guys can decide that you might be able to do, or you could take my recommendations or we could work it out here. But we would be looking for a motion that would indicate the conditional use permit is as submitted. Because we have definitions in that thing that aren't part of the city code. With the amendments or conditions that staff has proposed with revisions, including the, the issuance or the approval of our driveway permit that has been approved by engineering and approved by construction. And then we can agree on certain things, get those to the top of the approvals. And the things we don't agree on, we'll get down to the bottom of the approval. And then that'll make it real easy on council because they'll be able to look at it and go, hey, we all agree on these things, but now let's hammer up the things we don't agree on. So we're here to try and comply as best we can where we might be. But we get 100% of, of everything, cool. We get 70% of everything, cool too. Let's figure it out. We're all kind of playing it from behind. We have felt for the last 20 some years that we were in compliance because it wasn't until we came to driveway. The planning staff said, ooh, we need to get you in compliance. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Howell. Any questions for applicant?
Just a quick one, sir. When you're submitted, I've, I've read through it. I've lost track of it. You indicated you had a recommendation as to what the, what, what the approval should be. Is it, can you just point me to your text?
Well, I mean, I took the items, item by item. If you want, I could kind of go through that.
No, no, that's, I, I've got that. Was, was there some particular place that you made a recommendation as to what, what, what you were asking us to?
Well, the, the things that relate to a zoning development, future zoning development permit based on what was presented here tonight by staff. And the future plating, if we're not considering those things, there is not a request for a commitment of those types of things.
No, I, I understood you. I, I just, I, I thought you said you had some language in your documents that said what you were looking for.
Well, yeah.
Not the whole, not the whole write up.
Oh, yeah. The biggest issue really was the city has no definition of material or equipment. Right. So we worked with the prior planning director to define things as materials or consumables.
Where, where was it? I just lost it. I've got a stack that's 20, 30 pages. I just lost the reference.
That would be in our, oh, let's see.
See what I mean? It takes a while to find.
Yeah, I, I understand. It has to do with the storage. Okay, it's on page nine of our application. It says currently goods and materials submitted to be stored outside are not defined in the city code. About halfway down, one, two, three, four, one.
Is what you're saying that, is that paragraph and the following three, following three paragraphs currently goods and materials? Equipment does not and since consumed. Is that what you're saying? Was that what you referred to? You wanted those paragraphs?
Yeah, we basically got that and the size that we were looking for, for material storage. Because the city does have a proposed guideline and it's 25,000, 2500 square feet. And we figure we might need more than that. I don't know if it's an issue with staff's recommendation to move our fence. But those are the things we're looking for to be able to know what we can do. Right now, we have a use that we're using for our company. When Brad built the building in the early 90s, the plan was to have Tamarack work out. And he had a D6 dozer and we had a John Deere 450 and they were off on different jobs doing things. Mark joined us a little bit after that and we've been working together with what we do in construction and he does in excavation and the like. So we've just kind of morphed as, as staff said. And so we want to be able to go to potentially a third party that might be interested in that intermediate lot at a future date. We got a call from a party that was saying, I'm looking for a place to bring a granite countertop manufacturing site. Which would be a building where they build it, do everything inside, but then they store their granite outside. So they're going to need outside storage. And I, I appreciate Karen's comment when we met the other day about, why don't you just put a fence along Research Drive? We didn't want to worry about screening it on the inside. So if that's cool with you guys, you know, we, we can look at that as very, very viable. We just need some guidance. Where do you want us to go? I, I don't want to have to combat the staff every month because this is what we want to do. And they go, well, that's not included in your conditional use permit. So we need to go through and do all this other stuff. So help us out.
Any other questions at this point? Thank you, Mr. Howell.
Yes, sir.
So now the floor is open for public comments. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak? Anybody online, David? Thank you. Includes the public comment section. That's going to be our opportunity for some discussion. I guess one quick question for staff, or let's just quick. Let's talk about the driveway permit process and the CUP. Are they separate or are they combined or can they be combined?
And I may need DA's assistance from this, for this particular item. Just about everything we do in the Planning and Building Department requires a zoning development permit. That's, that, that overall check of the site that we look at. So it was actually, I believe, a ZDP that was submitted.
It was a driveway permit. Whatever that form is.
It was a driveway permit, yes.
So it was not a ZDP?
It was a form of a ZDP, yes. We just call them the driveway permit, but it was a zoning development permit.
So ironically, it was a form of a zoning development permit that brought us here this evening. And to my knowledge, there was no issues associated with the placement of the driveway along the property line. There was, you know, the request for it to meet certain construction standards when it was, was built. So that's the driveway itself. So I don't, the driveway is a huge issue. The commission here this evening can certainly say, we want to grant this driveway, but it's still subject to construction standards. And then we had also, at a staff level today, talked about, you know, this, this more, more accurate site plan for the lot as it's currently configured to include the fence location, the new driveway location. Then meeting the stormwater requirements, that we can process that all together under one multi-use ZDP. So we were very confident of any burdens on the applicant to come into compliance with these, these baseline conditions we were requesting this evening. So I don't know if that helps you or just muddy the waters.
I understand there's a 25% landscape requirement for a service commercial.
So, yes.
So it's 15 versus 20 versus, I think it had a minimum, the pervious or maximum, the pervious surface would be 75%. Based on a 25% landscape requirement.
Want me to answer that?
It's a statement, I guess, if you disagree.
I don't know if they're exclusive of each other or inclusive of each other. Open space may or may not be landscape. It could be grass, could be trees. If there is, what the landscaping requirement would be at zoning development permit of a subdivision or structure or something like that, then, you know, we'd submit a site plan with, here's where the trees are. Some of these are existing, some of these are new. I, I don't know the answer to the question for you, sir. I'm sorry.
Condition 12 does talk about, you know, preserving those existing, some of the trees. And that, that area may be used to satisfy both understanding and open space requirements. So the, the site may very easily be well within that, even if it's code state. We just need to have that more clearly defined. Or would you like to have it more?
So the overall premise that we received tonight was we're here to provide a conditional use permit in hopes of codifying or allowing the existing use. I guess no development is proposed at this point.
Other than the driveway.
Side driveway, correct. So. But the use was never officially allowed with a conditional use permit, which was required when the zoning was established. So I'm guessing there was no formal ZDP done at that point. If the building was already existing, why would you submit that? But the requirements of the service commercial have not been met. The sidewalk requirement, that is part of the, the service commercial. So it is a requirement and that's, I'm sure that's why staff included that in one of the requirements. If further development were done onsite, I don't know, if you wanted to pave the lot and get that pervious surface up to 80 or whatever percentage, 70%, would that require permitting?
Change in surface area?
The service material. Currently you've got parking surface which is pervious, moist.
No, it, it's actually not. It's, the, the city looks at dirt driveways and an area that we're moving equipment around. It's pretty much having to be somewhat compacted. If it was, if it was not impervious, then we'd never have much. You know, so the drainage report already takes into account that it's, it's not grass. It's not, you know, sucking up water and all that kind of stuff. The, the reason why we're, we want to use the, the millings, if it gives us the ability to control dust, it gives us the ability to re, regrade the surface very easily. And in our report, we showed you some photos of some other properties and other equipment type operations where they use those things. And they're, and it's very, very successful from that standpoint. So, I mean, right now, we've got somewhere between 69 and 72,000 square feet of area that we're using that would be deemed semi-impervious or mostly impervious. If, if somebody else came in in the future and they wanted to pave, that we would do a zoning development permit and, and show, or we would come to the city with our application and say, hey, this is what we're doing. And guess what? The detention bomb that's built, you know, when we planted it, will hold all of that.
Grading permits are required when the land is 300 square feet or in excess of 7500 square feet.
Just to be clear, if, if there were no zoning questions for this, if it had previously had a conditional use permit, putting a second driveway in, not something you'd ever ask the planning commission about, right?
Correct.
You're just handling.
Correct.
And the request, request, at least it was posted, I thought, to the planning commission is conditional use permit.
Correct. So that we at a staff level.
Now, the applicant says he doesn't, he didn't care about the condition use permit unless he put the separate driveway. But it seems to me that driveway requires permitting process. And one of the permitting processes, look through and see if zoning is compliant. It seems to me it is a two-step process. We're in a position to address granting or not granting conditional use permit. Subject to conditions and that's what was decided upon.
So that staff can enter.
And at, and at that point, that point, if it was, if it were granted, use for contractors, equipment storage and that sort of thing would be zoning permissible. And the applicant come to the city and request a driveway permit, which we grant or not grant it based upon whatever the driveway conditions are.
Providing these in compliance with the conditions associated with this conditional use permit.
Well, whatever is by the condition here. But for a conditional use permit, do we necessarily require a site plan?
Yes, we do.
Yes. Okay. So I mean, if, if that's the case, then it seems like it, it is, it is a two-step process. How can we, how can we do the engineering and review as such to approve a driveway permit? Now, I mean, that's not something before. We're not engineers as well. We, we're not competent to do driveway permits. I don't think. So if somebody is, I don't know. Yeah, I know that's, you know, I know so that may be satisfactory, but I don't know that we can do two things, do both of them at the same time. Patient had already been approved. The use of the property not complying, needing a conditional use permit, but the driveway application on hold. The application has been sitting in the city's office for two years. That's how long it's taken us to get this done with COVID.
Oh, is it a consensus that we're looking at the CUP about the driveway permit tonight?
Definitely. So. Looking at just, you look at the CUP, the staff recommends CUP grant, granted subject to certain conditions. I guess we need to walk through the conditions to see to exactly agree or disagree in this thing. Mr. Howell has said, and any further discussion now? Because ultimately, he doesn't have to agree and we could make a recommendation something that he's not comfortable with. But that's, we'd like to think, or we could, we'd like to think that we, yeah, be at one line.
I feel very uncomfortable sitting here and then trying to go through each of these conditions. When that should have been redefined by staff and the applicant before it came to us. These are, these are conditions that I can live with, but they're evidently not conditions that are suitable. I'd rather table this tonight, direct staff, work with the developer to come to an understanding of what these things mean. And see if they can come to a agreement on these conditions. I know, I, I, I feel very uncomfortable negotiating.
There's a lot here for us. There's a lot here for us to start trying to draft on the fly.
Exactly.
Get some guidance from you and I'll ask a question.
I, I, I will give you that guidance right now. Work with our staff and come to a consensus between the two.
You know, I understand that. But what I'm going to ask you to do, based on the comments you heard, is of these conditions, which ones are applicable to a plating process in the future and which ones are not? Because there's things that are on here that relate to a future. And the whole comment was, we're not here to talk about the future. We're not approving our site plans as submitted. We're, we're looking to approve the existing use as that aerial photograph showed. So if the consensus of the planning commission is to come back and negotiate these things with staff, only addressing things that are applicable today and not things that would be applicable at the time of a future zoning development permit or a future subdivision plan.
That sounds reasonable, Dave.
I don't have any problem just walking through this and seeing if there's some. Among the comments I've read, I, I, I'm very sympathetic to part of being a lawyer. So when, when revoked, I'm not sure we met if.
when revoked, I'm not sure we met if if something wasn't done by a certain date, your condition use permit, I don't think is revoked, like it goes away permanently, and then you have to come back and apply again. I mean, so as you say, it could be, it could be suspended, or it simply could be you're not in compliance, and then you can see if if the city chooses to bring a compliance action. I mean, but what revoke probably isn't right. Lots of people have conditional use permits, they do things that aren't permitted, it doesn't mean you go back and take away their right to have that kind of a use. At least, that seems to me. We're also, there's some inconsistency in this as to which things which things result in the conditional use permit being revoked, and which ones aren't mentioned as subject to, sort of, I guess. I mean, I guess you just have a requirement, that you have a series of requirements, and you can follow or not follow, you don't follow. You're subject to a compliance action. But maybe the language is that the say that the conditional permit will be in non-compliance. I don't even think you need to say it's a condition. You better, you better be doing it, or you're subject to compliance action. I mean, if that's the ordinance, then the ordinance exists.
I would like to consult with our legal counsel on that, when assuming the commission wants staff to work with the applicant. I'd like to work on that language with legal counsel, and we bring that back to you. Or have it together.
No, I I'm sympathetic, a lot of things happen, it's said, and I mean, I don't know if the if an engineering report can be approved in time, or even if he got it in time to work it, but he needs some further small revision, is May twenty-seventh a good date or not? I I guess the condition use permit becomes effective when that happens. That's one of the things, other. Just tell us what you want us to do. You didn't have a problem with lighting, if any?
Well, I do.
Powers, except for emergency use. I'll give you some feedback on that on number two. Is the final drainage report, the drainage report we have right now?
Yes.
Not a future drainage report? So what we want on number two is revisions to the current drainage report. Based on the engineer's comments, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I have a clarifying point on that, I'm okay with that, I already talked with our engineer and said, if you think we can meet it by this date, we'll work on it. But what I want to know is, we're taking the report you have in your file, submitted to staff, and we're answering the questions that the city engineer gave to us, that that have already been submitted to our engineer to be able to have staff review. Item number three. That is construction of something that may or may not be included in the current drainage report, or maybe amended in a future drainage when we come in to apply for a zoning development permit other than the driveway. Or a subdivision of the property. This item three, to me, is a plating issue. Do you, do you agree with that? If if there's a problem with the drainage with current usage for contractor services or something too, then there's a current problem. It's not a plating problem. Does that sound right? I mean, I'm getting some head nods, but I'm not sure.
Water quality controls one thing versus the runoff entirely, so I think that I don't know what issues are specific with that on your side.
I I think the issue that the city is after is they want us to put the detention pond in now. And when there's no reason now to put it in because the drainage is already taken into account in my college. If there are water quality issues, separate issues, we're okay on that, we'll work on that as soon as the ground, you know, gets us like by November first, twenty-twenty-two. We got to do erosion control, we'll work on erosion.
Part of that is if there's runoff from your equipment, oil leakage, gasoline spills with diesel, whatever, that that doesn't go into really, so there's some kind of.
That's water quality, not drainage.
Yes. I guess if agreement with the engineer that the drainage report reflects the current conditions. And that's all resolved by May twenty-seventh, whatever date, that would seem reasonable.
I would concur. And and I think what we'll probably end up doing is, just for the record, is we'll ask Ben to walk the site for this, talk about, you know, any erosion control type issues, you know, particulate matter runoff or stuff like that, so we can get it into our queue to figure out what we got to do. Some of that's going to go away when we bury all that, all that concrete, just stabilize the bank.
Pardon me, we have a request that we go back to the previous slide.
We would be on number three. Like, my question on number four is basically if I pay the applicable stormwater fees based on what I have now, am I, am I subject to an additional fee in the future if that changes? Or do we do that and pay those fees in the future when we actually do something different than we're doing it?
We don't know.
If somebody, if somebody grades more.
You've got to work with staff to get those answers, we can't help you with that, Skip.
That's fine. You just gave me the answer I need.
Okay.
It's going down the list, why don't we continue?
I want to back up one to number three, since we're doing it this way, and that is I that the onsite detention and water control facilities are installed. Somehow, we should reference according to the the revised drainage report that gets taken care of as part of this whole process. You know, you've got that preliminary drainage report, you've got feedback from the engineer that says make these changes to it to finalize it based on existing site conditions. Number three is about implementing that drainage report.
I think that's fine, as I understood the applicant, as long as you're not trying to have him do something for future work that doesn't exist, that he wasn't objecting to that which is required for the current conditions. Right now, as I said before, the current conditions of drainage from the site are taken into account by the floodplain. So if I build the detention pond right now, I'm reducing the amount of water going into the floodplain. So we're hearing, I'm hearing different things. There is nothing in the drainage report that we have right now that says construct the detention pond today. That would be constructed with a future improvement to the property or plating of the property or a zoning development permit to increase that. So I want to make it very clear to staff that I'm happy to go back and talk with engineering, we're not coming back to you as we got to build the pond right now, because the pond's not required, what we have on that site as we exist today. We can be agree and disagree. They want us to put the pond in. We're not required, we don't have to do it by statute or ordinance. So they're going to ask for it. You can make the decision, go, council will make the ultimate awful turn, just informing you where we are on this particular issue.
For item five, final concept plans.
I think that gets thrown out, we're not doing anything based on future, we're only doing now.
I think the word's final concept plan refers to what you submitted as a proposed site plan. You have three of them, one for each lot. I may be mistaken, but I think that's what that was being referred to.
If if that's what it was referred to, then we only did what the city asked us to do, if all we had to do was submit one site plan for what we got and what we're doing now, I can out revise that, we'll, we'll change it. Because all that stuff's going to go away, the only thing you're going to have is one driveway, new driveway, and a proposed fence. Sounds easy. And one plan is a lot. Probably a lot easier. We just did what we're asked to do.
Sixty agreed to as hours operation, lighting.
Sixty said he wanted to add a caveat, caveat. And otherwise is required for emergency situations, some some sort of language like that. Yeah, we'll, we'll figure something out this day. We'd already talked about that, seven, eight, nine, ten, and eleven, we can go through those real quick, we're okay on this.
Okay. Can we advance the screen one?
I don't know whether thirteen even needs to be stated to some extent, I mean, we can't sell a lot without going through a plat. And I think we agree that prior to the issuance of the building permit for a new building or an addition, then we would go through some of these other things. I think we're in agreement on that, from that perspective. And then item C, if that's the zone, if that's an ordinance, with regards to that, that'll come into play, a final plot, if you want to repeat it here, we don't care, it won't come into play, in fact, until we actually get into a plat. We can do curb and gutter and sidewalk. We can give the city money for a sidewalk. Maybe I can course him into using it across the street and stone.
I guess that's kind of a question I have, since we have requirements for a commercial, service commercial, and it's non-compliant when it was established. Coming to request something from us, this is our opportunity to put those requirements in play or we defer to the future subdivisions, which may or may not happen.
From a staff perspective, you know, recognizing that the objective was to, as much as possible, bring this into compliance of what the owners and dealing with the items that really need attention at this point in time. That curb gutter sidewalk could certainly be addressed at the time of a subdivision. But at this point, staff has a very different perspective related to the engineering's or the the preliminary, preliminary drainage report and the need to take care of existing site runoff and the water quality associated with that. So I don't think that condition's going away, that's something at the staff level, we would like to make sure it's addressed. But the curb for the
You're going back to item three then?
Well, I'm kind of tying it back, yeah. But the the curb gutter and sidewalk can certainly be addressed when a flat is proposed. We don't see that as nearly nearly as critical as the other item at this point in time. And if I remember correctly, that preliminary drainage report actually does talk about onsite detention facility.
And we'll take number fourteen off the table. Don't worry about it. Mr. Chairman, I just, fourteen refers to then the curb and gutter and also sidewalks fees and move up. And four refers to fees for impervious areas of transportation capital expense. Right, and I if the point you're making is, at some point, they need to be done, do we, do we need, should those, should those be referenced as being required at the time further development is done beyond the driveway or, I'm not sure, what is the, what is the timing to call for on those items?
Well, I would think then when they develop the property, and so we got, we got trimmed up, we're in order here. The building was built, then they got annexed into the city, then they got zoning applied and conditional use.
Because there is some limited development and use of it that's already occurred, but it's sort of, is it like, is, is this something that should be a note with the CUP, just saying that when, when further development occurs, transportation capital expense, stormwater runoff, sidewalk or fees removed, and any applicable fees, including all of them.
The following will be evaluated at that point in time.
Exactly, that's probably appropriate, because that subdivision, you can actually waive or interrupt.
Of course, he might not subdivide, he might, he could just develop the properties all three.
Then it's okay the way it is.
But, but they presumably be doing that, he's going to want to, like the fees in lieu of, et cetera. The curb and gutter and stuff comes in a plat. And Larry's right. The bone of contention is the city wants us to put in the detention pond now. Because they think we need to stop the amount of water going from the site into the plant, even though FEMA has approved that amount of water. The, the issues in the drainage report that we got from the city engineer are pretty much simple. The big question was one part of the reports that seventy percent, another part of the reports that seventy-five percent. The rest of them were, put this thing on the tight end lock, and if you want it, you you've got it, you've got their his his comments. So it's not a big deal, that's the big issue, we want to figure out. Karen and I have had this conversation, I'd like to get a really great understanding of what we could potentially do with that site, be able to come in and submit it once, the drainage report we're required to put, give you now is based on where we think we are right now, not where we're going to go. So if I go out and talk to this guy that maybe wants to come in with something, he may want to put in something different. So I got to get some ideas as to whether or not I can go to seventy percent, bump it up to seventy-five, go to eighty percent, you know, I I don't know, but with some guidance and you told me you can't answer certain things, but you've given me a sense of where we need to go, what we need to do. So your time here tonight has not been wasted.
I think, keep in mind too, that you asked for a conditional use because the city asked you to do it.
Correct.
That that conditional use will say, construction contractor services would be allowed use under this conditional use permit.
Correct.
If it complies with the zoning of the property. So that that will give you the direction of what we're thinking you want to do with your project.
Yeah, that's not the hard part, it's all the other stuff. You know, if it were just that language, it's the other thing, do this, do this, and do this. It doesn't sound to me like we're all that far. Absent, absent a single site plan, which kind of puts everything in one place, I mean, most of this probably could have, could have talked through. One damage, the the site plan that comes back. Would it be useful to include in that marking the setback, there's a fifty-foot front setback, should that be noted on the plan? I would think probably. So if you want, we'll put it on. Say yes or no?
I would, I would say it should go on.
Then I'll put, it's it's a line on a
Yeah, yeah.
But it's, it's kind of like, if you, if you don't, if you don't comply to it, it gets very annoying to people. But it's a fifty-foot setback for a building. It's not a fifty-foot no builds-up. It's a fifty-foot setback for a structure. So parking lot, for example, go in there, a driveway can go in there. You know, a sign can go in there, a fence can go in there. So, but yeah, we can, we can put the setback lines on the, on the.
On the draw.
What kind of notice is required if we, if we table this, do, if we're tabling it? Do we have to have to go through all the whole process notice again, or can we continue until in the next meeting and table until you, till you've had a chance to work?
If you choose to continue this, you would announce the date and time to which it is continued. And in that situation, we don't need to do an additional notice.
When's your next planning commission?
Be the second Tuesday.
Two weeks from today. Yeah, we won't be here for that. I mean, I, we, we might, but I guess if, my comment would be, if you want to continue it to the next planning commission meeting, subject for staff having the time, I mean, I'm going to respect her time, I mean, these, the, your staff is, and to your convenience as well. Oh, yeah, I'm I'm not, yeah, I mean, I got to get the engineer to do some stuff, and so if you want to continue to the next twenty, to the twenty-fourth, and if, if we're not ready, staff can always come in and say, hey, let's go into April. And so if you want to continue to the next 20, to the 24th, and if, if we're not ready, staff could always come in and say, hey, let's go into April.
Does that mean it's officially, officially canceled?
We, at a internal level, it talked about canceling the March 24th meeting. We did not have any other applications lined up for that. But we can certainly decide that we need to have that meeting.
Yes. Sorry, this is Commissioner Nielsen, I was just wondering, what if we did the 7th then? That gives him almost a month to get everything done, talk to you guys, come back in, is that unreasonable applicant?
Are we talking what, the 14th of April or the 7th?
I think, I think our next one after the 24th would be the, the 7th.
Seven.
It would be the 14th.
Oh, it is the 14th?
It'd be the second and fourth Thursday.
And that's certainly, you have opportunities to.
We can do that. So cable into a time cert.
Technically continue it to a date and time too.
So I'm moving to continue this matter to this first meeting in April, that'd be April 14th, 2022.
I would agree.
At 6:30 PM.
At 6:30 PM.
Yes.
Very good, we have a motion, the second.
Do you want to add some of the direction for staff and the applicants?
I, I think our discussion up to this point is go, go through the conditions of approval they recommend and negotiating those to something that you both. Which may mean you eliminate, retake.
And a point of clarification, I'm assuming that's based on a single site plan.
Yes.
We're not looking at three lots, looking at a single site plan with a second driveway.
Documenting your current condition with the additional driveway that you're requesting.
Correct.
With setbacks.
And our CUP comment won't address that driveway, but it'll all be at one place, you don't have to have two drawings.
Make sure the driveway show 20 feet.
20 feet wide.
And I have no, no problem with identifying the singles like that as a concept site plan. Because if you call it a site plan, you've got a long list of requirements in the code that needs to be out there. But if you call it a concept. We'll know what you're doing and later time we can deal with.
Is that, is that right Karen?
So motion to continue to the 14th, second.
Second debt.
Yes, thank you. Pull the members.
Chris Brown?
Yes.
Fisher Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Nielsen?
Yes.
Chair Hertzler?
Yes. Thank you.
Gentlemen and lady, thank you for your insight, I thank you for giving me some guidance, I think staff some guidance as well. We will move forward to bring back to you what we are doing now and how, what the ordinance would require us to do. Show fencing and all that kind of stuff, so I think it's been productive for us, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Howes. Takes us to reports. Karen, Harry, Andrew.
I do want to follow up on just one item. Commissioner Brown had asked a question about a development out there, it'll be an email. And that was specifically the Haven of Paradise. That, that had been given an extension on the preliminary plat and that timeline is waiting. But I do want to report that at a staff level, we have, or that project has been purchased by a new developer. They are actively working on it, that they have construction guidelines in with the city engineer under review. And we do expect to receive a final plat application before that preliminary plat expires here. I believe at the very beginning of April. So based on the fact that there's active activity, if we anticipate that final application, we were not requiring them to, to request an extension of that preliminary plat. So that's, that's the status of that particular item.
Do you have a question on term rentals, is anything happening in that issue?
That continues to be worked on with the staff level. We're not working to prepare a presentation for, I believe, a joint session with planning commission and city council to give everybody all the same information at some time. And present findings based on all the research that staff has done and look at potential options if there is interest in changing how they are currently administered. So we have that at some point scheduled in the future. Plus, we're, we're, we're home in it.
Commissioners, have any comments?
This is Commissioner Nielsen, I actually have two. I'm trying to get the hang of our schedule, is there a possibility that maybe I could get a 2022 calendar? And I'm wondering if we can't get an updated city William Park Planning Commissioners Board information sheet?
We can get that taken care of for everyone, yes.
Perfect, thank you.
Very good, anything else?
Are we going to give the final version copy, print a copy over our new envisioned 2030 cop plan?
We can make that happen also.
Because the copy I have was a draft and there were changes made in that.
That's, that's true, the story was there's a few, a few edits to be done or somewhere.
Yeah.
We will follow up on that for you all.
Also, the. Title 16, 17 and 18 of the codes and proposed revisions to that, that's, that's still in process, they're waiting for.
It is, yeah, and I need to circle back to the, the consultants on that. Yeah, they should, they should have it to me like any second.
Oh, there's nothing else, it's 8:28, meetings adjourned.
Thank you, have a nice night, guys.
Yeah.
Good night. Hi Sean.